But yeah, he indicated he was gonna figure it out when I emailed, you know, the results of the Google poll.
Yeah. I thought he was gonna be too. Well, it's 6 o'clock. Thanks everyone for coming. We're dealing with police protection between the county and the cities. And it hasn't been renewed in quite a long time. And I think there's even... Come on up, Jim. You guys can all move forward. You here okay, Chuck?
I'm very good.
Come on up.
We got plenty of room up here. It ain't church, come on up.
We can move these chairs and make some benches right here too. We don't care.
You can bring as many as you can. It's fine.
You have to start yelling at the old folks.
Huh?
You have to yell at them once. We just laughed at them old guys. Now we are there.
So, but anyway, we've got contracts with four cities. And by the code, we need contracts with all of them. And so that's probably why some of you got noticed through your attorneys, because our attorney contacted your attorneys to figure out how we want to accomplish this. And so, that's what we... Andrew's idea was to have a work session. Because I think we've been charging some cities anywhere from $10 to $25. Don't hold me to it. A person. And I don't think the county can do it for that. So, trying to get everybody here together on ideas of what everybody's expecting. And just to show you where we're at with what the sheriff's budget looks like to us. So, does anybody have any questions?
Is this gonna be for business this year or for next fiscal year?
It'll start July 1.
Do you realize that our budgets are over?
Yeah, we're already budgeting.
Our budgets are already done, right?
Yeah, for fiscal year. We already got their budget.
So do we.
The bulk of the four that we contract with, their clerks reach out to me every fall before they start their budget process. And they ask me if we're gonna renew it, and they ask me if there's gonna be an increase. I told all four of them I was satisfied with where they're at now. I did notify a couple of them that we're gonna have to look at increasing it.
What's the reason for increase? Does it cost more to patrol the cities?
It just costs more for everything.
Squad cars cost more, fuel costs more. I don't know how... I don't know how old these contracts are. Maybe some of you do know. My... The point I'm at, I'm getting at is, I'm satisfied with it for this year. And Mark, I did get your... the information you got from Wallo and Marion County. I'll tell you right now, my opinion is the high end of both of them are ridiculous. And that's... I know that's... You didn't... You just forwarded what they're charging. I'm still in favor, like I told you in the meeting that day, I'm in favor of leaving them alone this year. And if we need to revisit them for next year, so be it. My office, we are not in the business of making money. We're not in the business of losing money either, okay? Like I told you in the board of supervisor meeting. These guys, these ladies and gentlemen, their constituents already pay a portion of my regular budget. I don't know what portion. That's not my business. That's you guys' business. I think two of the cities, I'll be quite honest, I think Eddyville and Fremont are right where they need to be, in my opinion. Beacon and University Park, next year I would be in favor of raising them a little bit. You know, the formulas you sent me from Wallo County and Marion County is per capita, so much per resident. The four that we contract with, we're not dealing with four apples here. There's a big difference in us patrolling and running traffic and providing extra time for University Park versus Eddyville. Strictly, I mean, from a traffic standpoint, you go to Eddyville and do a car count, it's... I mean, it'd be, I don't know, 10, 15 times higher than, say, University Park is. Fremont's got high traffic because they got the highways going through there. I don't want to create hardship for anybody this year. I don't. I can admit it. I said I was satisfied for another year when the clerks called me. I know George, I told him that there may be an increase coming down the road. But for the sheriff's office and from my standpoint, I'm satisfied with them another year where they're at. I certainly am sitting here telling you guys I understand. You're the political subdivision that has to sign off on it. I know it's not... It ain't up to me 100 percent. I feel like I should have a big say in the amounts because it's my office that is providing the service. So that's my take. As far as this year, I'm happy with what they are.
I will say, when you mentioned... Let's go back to George's thing. Just for the record, on February 20, we had a meeting with the sheriff. When you said you guys talked to the sheriff, we let him know then that there's gonna be some changes to 2080s. There's some deputies got near 19.8 percent raises. These deputies patrol your cities. It's not our responsibility as a corporation at this end to provide police protection for a loss. There's difference between sheriff's responsibilities and police protection. This is the four contracts we have right now. Fremont is 416 hours a year. We're getting reimbursed $15 an hour. Eddyville, 720 hours a year, we're getting reimbursed $26.19 an hour. Beacon, six hours a week, 312 hours a year, we're getting reimbursed $10.89 an hour. University Park, eight hours a week or 416 hours a year for $10.09 an hour. Here's what the deputies' wages are gonna be starting July 1.
When you're talking about reimbursement, are you talking about what profit taxes reimbursement?
That's what the cities reimburse the county.
We pay... If you say Beacon pays $3,500 a year.
Yeah, whatever, eight hours a week, yeah.
$3,500 a year.
It amounts to $10.09 an hour for the hours you requested.
It's not 30... I left my contracts at home. It's not in property tax. What Mark's talking about is your contract with us.
Yeah.
We reimburse us for that, so...
Here's the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 patrol deputies and their salaries, insurance costs, I-Pers, et cetera. The total is $657,452.90. They average 85 hours per pay period. There's 26 pay periods in a year. That equals 2,210 hours a year per deputy. So I took the 657,000 divided by eight deputies, that averages $82,181. Divide that by the 2,210 hours, that's $0.37 just for a deputy, an hour. We're getting reimbursed $10 an hour.
So what do you think of rate? How much... What do you think the raise would be?
Well, can we... We're not... It's not our... We're not in here to do it for a loss.
What about... What about the... We pay profit taxes. Part of that goes to the county. That's part of that?
That's for sheriff responsibilities.
For what?
Sheriff responsibilities.
What are sheriff's responsibilities?
Serve papers, back up the police. Andrew, do you have more of a description of what sheriff responsibilities are versus police?
Well, I think Russ would be a better position to talk about that. But also, you know, crowd security and transports, prisoners, obviously the jail is obviously on the sheriff's section of the sheriff. But obviously Russ could be a much better position than I.
You wanna go, Brad? Code book 3. We can tell them all.
The code section is fairly thick.
Which, which Mark brings up an interesting point. You're talking about how much it costs per hour and so on and so forth. These eight deputies you're talking about, they have a lot of other duties other than providing the extra patrol for these cities. That's not what it's costing to provide these cities with their extra patrols.
When Ben Johnson stops me, because he's coming back from patrol in Barring City, are you saying he can do it less for than $76,000 what we're paying him?
You know, was he up there? Did he serve a paper while he was up there?
He said he got there patrolling. I've been... It's the same thing. I was down working as a tower in Eddyville.
What do you have for an hourly rate, which you come up with?
These are the wages that you... That you're gonna pay the deputies. It's not broken down by the hour, it's down by the year.
I thought you broke it down. I thought you said...
Oh, for the hour, $37.18.
While we're on the topic, I know we don't want to get off topic here. Because you brought it up, the two big raises. Like we discussed in our budget meeting, I feel that that is part of the union contract, which is no more. I understand that. We discussed all of that. You guys approved those raises in my budget meetings. And how many things are we gonna blame those two big raises on? If you cut a... Say you cut an employee, county employee from full-time to part-time, are you gonna blame those two big raises on that?
Here's what Wallo County is charging per capita, per person. Anywhere from $35 to $65 per person.
Per person?
Per person.
Do you know what their call volume is? I'm sure that they're a little fizzier, but if I asked you, I would guess.
I don't... I assume their cities are probably the same call, because their populations go anywhere from 97 people at Chila Coffee to 1,024 at Eddyville.
Why you tell you will... We contract... We have a toxic 20 hours a week. It breaks down to basically what we've been... It's almost $43,000 a year.
For how many hours a week?
Uh, anywhere from 15 to 20. It averages about 80 a month. It breaks down to $4.46 per person that actually lives in Wallo County. Because there's 803 residents in Eddyville that actually live in Wallo County. So if you broke it down by per person, each person of that 803 is paying $4.46 per person per month.
Per person per month?
Per person per month.
Per month, so you got ticket times 12.
Where Mahaska County would contract it for $18,862 per year. And we had patrol approximately 60 hours per month. With a Mahaska County population of Eddyville of 221, it breaks down to $7.10 per person per month. And I'll say, looking right now, on behalf of both Wallo County and Mahaska County, we are very happy with what we have with patrol labor, the sheriff department, and how they interact with our citizens.
Wallo breaks down to $53.52 a person a year.
How you figure that $37 just by the population of real old cities?
What $37?
Per hour?
Per hour, yeah.
No, that's just what it costs us per deputy.
Yeah, but you said that's what you want, is start charging $37.
That don't include the car or nothing else. That's just what we pay the deputies per hour.
What about the roof though, and stuff like that, if people don't live? Like in between Eddyville and Beacon. How you gonna charge them?
Well, I think they paid about... They're... By law, they're not required to have police protection. They're required a sheriff just like the rest of the county.
We don't have police protection, we got sheriff protection.
By law, you're required to have police protection. And so that's what this contract is with the county, and the sheriff is doing the police protection through the county. See, it's been said that the contract with the sheriff and the cities. It's not. Your contract's with the county, and the sheriff is fulfilling that duty. The Iowa code is what requires you to have police protection.
See, like the city of New Sharon has their own police protection. Russ does not do New Sharon. Right?
On a regular basis.
Right. They have a city police officer, though, that does their police protection.
They have their primary jurisdiction. Same with Osmonds. Any incorporated town is required by code to do one of two things. They either have to have their own police force to provide the police protection, or they have to contract with another law enforcement agency to provide that.
I wrote Michael Schrock and asked him. I just got their budget. $1.9 million for police protection. Just going off of memory, I think that's $168 a person. New Sharon spends, if I understand their budget right, $128,000. That's $100 per person.
Mark, what did you say New Sharon was?
It's $128,000. Not quite $129,000.
Do they have a police officer, full-time police officer in New Sharon?
Yeah. They have a police officer, yeah. Yeah, I guess he's full-time. He's probably on duty all the time. I don't know. I mean, they only have one that I know of, right, Russ?
Right. Right now, they only have one.
So, I suppose he's on call or whatever.
I think from our standpoint, we're going in the hole doing this. We can't be reimbursed $10 when we're paying a deputy $37, plus adding equipment and everything else to it yet.
But you gotta understand, we've already budgeted, made our budget. You know, where we gonna come up with the money? We want it next month, you know, where we gonna come up with the money? And who do we pay? Do we still... Like we've been buying things for the sheriff department, like their body cams and stuff like that? Or do we pay it to the county now?
Contracts... They'll be up to us. Three are where the contracts are written to, but probably to the county.
Yeah, then it goes to general funding so the sheriff don't see none of it, right?
The sheriff sits down with us in January and February, does the whole budget to two.
Right now, we've been helping out the sheriff's department by pushing the things that they need.
What are you proposing? I guess that's the bottom line. What are you proposing?
Well, I'm... It's my thoughts. We need at least our money back for the deputy. $37.18 an hour.
Yep. You're saying $37.18 an hour for the sheriff in our city.
And I'm thinking probably at least $4 or $5 for the car, and all the electronics in it.
How much for a car?
$5 an hour.
But Mark, they're already paying part of my budget already. They're already putting money toward my budget.
The car should already be covered at least by one salary.
And again, I don't know the breakdown of that. The budget that you guys have provided me to run the sheriff's office for a year is already from... partially from these folks here in their cities.
Taxpayers, profit tax.
You know, when we were first elected, I'm gonna be honest with you, Russ and I had this conversation up front. I thought I was double dipping too, to be honest with you. I spoke to an attorney by name of Carl Salmons. A lot of you think highly of him because of another issue we got going on. And he's the one that told me, "Police protection is totally different than sheriff's protection." Police protection is made fair and legal in the eyes of the law by the Iowa legislature, not by supervisors. They're two different things. If we would not do... We're already booked for about 16, 24... We're already doing 40 hours of police protection a week with four cities. Let's just double that to 80. That's two deputies. We could do without... We could do with two less deputies and two less cars if we weren't gonna do police protection.
How many hours do they spend on the rest of the county's people?
I don't know what they do. They do sheriff's responsibilities.
Would you have this meeting in January, February, to talk about what your budgets were gonna be and what your needs were gonna be? Would that not have been a good time for us to have this meeting? And realize this is what we're gonna have, this is what we're gonna have to have you come up with, the cities, before you certify your budgets?
Probably would have been.
Right, so I think in our eyes, it's only fair that we brought this on, is after we already have our budgets made, March, we can't expect just all of us to go and mend our budgets now. We'll go with extra money on one month. Right?
It doesn't even give us change to even consider raising our own profit taxes to cover our costs. We don't have it in budget, we don't have it in here. Obviously, we don't care, so...
That's a nice assumption. How many of you got the deputies or sheriff comes to your city council meetings every month?
Every one of us. And I asked Russ about it. He said that. I asked him, "Are you sure this number's gonna be good enough for you this next year?"
And so when we tell the sheriff there's gonna be changes, and it's not relayed to you, is it all our fault? How many of you reached out to us and asked us if there's gonna be any changes?
How many times have you guys come to our council meetings and explained this to us?
I've been to one of yours.
That's about a year ago. It's changed the year, huh?
What do you want us to do?
Have the meetings at night so we can all come and participate?
George, we've had a lot of meetings on this EMA 911 thing at nights, and you never came to one of them.
I've never came to one of the 911 meetings. I've only missed one, actually.
The supervisors had some special meetings at night here, George, and you didn't come to any of them.
Was that on the budget? I'm confused here. Let's stay on topic. If you're gonna... I didn't say I didn't want to raise. I didn't say it wasn't fair. I talked to Russ about it before the first of the year. But to come to us and, "Do you say you need more money or you're not getting your sheriff's protection?" That's not right.
Let me ask you this. Why is the sheriff coming to you with contracts when he knew we weren't gonna approve them then?
I don't remember the conversation you keep referring to, Mark. I'm not saying it didn't happen. I'm telling you, I don't remember you sitting here at this table in my budget meeting telling me, "You have to raise those contracts."
Did we not talk about changes how to take place?
We talked about it, but I don't remember saying we had to change.
One thing that kind of brings us up now is these 2080 agreements expire July 1st. That's one reason it's coming up now.
I think I've resigned one for the new contract. Yeah, and they just last month, I believe, was...
But they've not come across the county for voting yet.
Barb?
Thank you.
Yeah?
The first thing I want to discuss is the 2080 agreement. Has there ever been one? Because I have never seen one.
There's supposed to be one between the county and every city. Incorporated town, if you want police protection through the county.
I've never seen it. I can tell you that.
No, I think it's been lapsed for quite a while.
Mayor of Marcus is...
They don't have one. They do not have one.
No, there's four or five cities that don't have them, Barb.
Oh, good. And just so people know, I got an email from our lawyer telling us about this. Because I was quite ignorant about it. I didn't know about this, that we had to have some police protection. I think, and I'm not sure the amount, but I think it's brought up for us to have extra protection. It was gonna be like $6,000 a year. Now, we have two counties in our town. We have Mahaska in the majority, and then we have one at Pausheet. So whatever this amount is that we're gonna have to come up with, well, I don't know where we're gonna get it at, until we'll figure something out. Are we gonna be charged double? Pausheet County hasn't contacted me yet for a meeting. They contacted me and said, you know, "You gotta get this done." Well, evidently, we need a meeting too.
So Pausheet County just contacted you?
So we're getting double here.
No, I think you only need one contract. Correct me if I'm wrong, but do they only need one contract since they're split into two counties?
Well, the code just provides that either they have to have their own police force, you know, police chiefs and guy, or have an agreement with some other law enforcement agency, be it Mahaska County or anyone else. That someone else has to provide that for them. I know of no requirement that says you have to have two different contracts because your city goes into two different counties. Either Power Sheet or Mahaska can provide the protection, or the entire city. It just has to be an agreement with some other agency, or in theory, I guess a police force can do it, of some other city. But it just has to be some other agreement with some other entity that provides that protection, be it Mahaska or somebody else.
So if there was a disturbance inside city limits in Pausheet County, it would all already be an agreement with the sheriff's department that they would go into Pausheet?
Yes, you could do that. Again, I mean, you'd have to refer to your own city attorney. Obviously, I think... Oh, yeah. Obviously, you refer to him. But yeah, that's my understanding. It's the agreement between the city and some other law enforcement agency.
So it does not have to be one?
That's my understanding, yes. It has to be one or the... Well, I guess it could have two, in theory, I suppose.
That's who we are.
Yeah, that you go for.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't want... Our town can't afford the one, not alone, but both.
Yeah. I refer, again, that's my understanding of code. But again, I refer to your own city attorney to make an authoritative decision for the city. Obviously, I don't represent the city itself, right, so I can't necessarily guide you legally on that particular question. I would always refer to your city attorney on that. But it's my understanding there has to be a contract with some other agency. You know, be it Mahaska, Power Sheet, whoever, to provide the services.
I apologize. I was late. I got off at 6:00. I didn't want to speed to it. Had you already... I guess this is my question. Let's cut to the chase. We all know we've gotta do this, whether we like it or not, it's gotta be done. Okay, so have you figured out... How have you figured out what every town is gonna pay? Do you already have that figured out?
I've roughly... What I've done is I roughly took the $37.18 an hour and added $5 for the car, and all the electronics and everything that goes with it. That includes the IT guy that maintains the electronics equipment, everything else. The office space for the deputies. It's about $31 per capita, not in a... The office space for the deputies. It's about thirty-one dollars per capita on the happy average, is what I come up with.
So then you go to deduct?
For how many hours it'll work?
Thirty-one per person in the city? Like if you have a hundred and seventy, it's gonna be thirty-one dollars per month?
A year.
Per year?
Per person, per year?
Right. 'Cause what's happening now, and I think you guys are getting a little off base, but the rural people that live outside in the unincorporated part of Mahaska County are subsidizing your police protection.
So does Osceulusus, so does New Sharon.
Does that make sense? I understand where you guys are coming from, that you don't wanna do your.
We pay, we, we pay, our property taxes go, part of it goes to the county too for, for police protection.
So does Osceulusus, so does New Sharon.
Yeah.
That's, that's not for police protection, that's for sheriff's, that's not for, Jim, that's not.
Thirty-seven, ten, and five dollars, you want us to pay the sheriff and the deputies pay, just split the cities. Mahaska County, you want them to pay the payroll.
But see, what you're paying on property tax is not for police protection, that's for sheriff responsibilities.
Sheriff responsibilities.
See, the rural people pay that too.
That donut shop stuff?
Someone always brings it up.
Can't get away, can you, Russ?
I had coffee with Russ a couple of days.
And honestly, be honest with you, Jim, you wanna, everybody wonder where the rural people pay? I think Sue, I think we took for her.
Sheriff protection?
Carl Solomon says sheriff's responsibilities are, are a county general expense. I think we put four hundred thousand dollars, give or take, on just the rural people of just the sheriff's responsibilities this year.
So is the taxes to the rural people gonna decrease then when we start collecting all the twenty-eight E?
Nope.
You're running that far in the red?
This is just to recoup our expense of what it's costing us to do police protection. This is not an income-producing thing here.
So I need you to clarify, is it thirty-one, thirty-seven, eighteen, plus the five is forty-two dollars each expense? Is that per hour that they are in our community doing police work or is that per person in our community?
That's what it's costing us per hour on a minimum, just to do police work.
Correct. What are you going to charge us? Is it per person or per hour that the deputy or the sheriff is in our community doing?
So if, sure, can I work both?
We can, I can, we can do it either way. But thirty-one dollars on a, per capita is about a, a wash one way or the other, I think.
So if they pay the thirty-one dollars per capita, how many hours do we get for that?
Probably eight or ten or fifteen. I don't know. If you wanna do it per hour, I'm good per hour too. Yes.
Is that a week? Is that a month? Is that?
I figure in a week.
And every small town is gonna give the same amount or you're gonna do it off their population?
That's why I was gonna go thirty-one, that's why I was gonna go thirty-one dollars per population.
Right, but a larger town, I assume you can get more hours of police protection for their thirty-one dollars than a smaller town?
Probably.
Are we gonna get, start getting logs to where they patrol the city or whatever?
If you'd like to see them, put it in the contract. I don't have an issue with that.
We keep a log already of every single hour spent.
You know, we start telling people, hey, you're gonna have to read your taxes 'cause we gotta start, we're gonna wanna know when. We never see them down here or something, whatever, you know? Nope. Russ, I got two deputies go through town, go home. They live within a couple miles of my house, my, or City Beacon. Russ will let those through Beacon here and I, probably two or three times a day. Maybe I'll start charging a toll. You guys gotta go through Beacon too, by the way, if I remember right. Collect some money for this year.
Are we at the farm to market road, Jim? We gotta clean out?
They ain't been for the last six years, so.
That's why I said, we've gotta do our responsibility.
Mark, using your figures, could it cost us an extra nine hundred dollars a month? From what we're paid right now, or is saving enforcement from the Mahaska County?
That could be. I've not done the math on that.
It costs you a hundred thousand a year.
You're not running in the red right now, so you're covering your expenses right now, correct?
You know what? We don't have to sign a police, we don't have to sign a contract to do police protection. So we don't have to do it at all, period.
Right, I understand that. But I'm, I'm just trying to get this in my mind. Right now, you're, you're covering the expenses?
The thirty-seven dollars an hour and the cars was gonna cover expenses. No, we're, right, right now with the ten dollars now, we're not covering expenses, no. We're go, we're running in the red.
You're running in the red right now. Okay.
We're, we're running at a loss.
That's what I wanted to.
And this don't, this don't include any nine-one-one service, the radio service or anything that we just spent five million dollars on. This don't include none of that.
What kind of surcharge does that?
Russ, how many hours do you have?
I don't think that covers the whole bill, does it? I thought they bought radios with the surcharge money.
Yeah, 'cause we don't contract with you, or we don't keep a log. Before we contract with, I've got the log right in my office every single hour that we've been additional. That's not the dispatch phone. So Eddie Bell, if there's a call at the elementary school, there's a theft of a car, that's not contact, I think. That's a call.
Okay.
So I, I, we don't log Martin City because we don't have any contract things.
So if you have a call and we don't have a contract, you, you won't respond to it because we don't have a contract?
If there's a call in Mahaska County for law enforcement, we're going, whether there's a contract or not.
So this is just for the extra patrol hours?
Just, yeah, what we're talking about here is for the, your contract, you're above and beyond.
So there is a basic service?
There have been, there have been a handful of sheriffs in Iowa who have told their incorporated cities, "If you don't contract with us, you don't call us for nothing." Okay? We get a call, we're going. You know, and, and another thing we haven't discussed here, if we just eliminate all these contracts, let's say they all decide to contract with the state patrol or Martin City contracts with, uh, uh, Poushee County and Lighten contracts with Marion County. We don't have any contracts here. If we get a call there, we're still going. And it doesn't change that figure there at all. Right now, we're getting some reimbursement for it. I think forty-two eighteen an hour is, you know, you, you talk about the benefits, you have them listed up there as well. You know, not all those expenses are for these contracts, these additional contract hours, you know? Some of them are, are just for the, the calls, the paper service, uh, transporting prisoners. There's other things included in what you had up there, what Mark showed us. He keeps talking about sheriff's duties. We're a law enforcement agency, but we're, we're really different from the police department, okay? Police department, their, their sole responsibility is public safety. The sheriffs, sometimes you get a chance, I think it's three thirty-one, five sixty-one. Read that code section, three thirty-one point five sixty-one. That will outline all the duties of me and my deputies. And it's pages and pages and pages. Regardless of whether they have any contracts, we still have those expenses.
But the thing that you gotta kinda remember is, I think, I forget, I had the numbers and I lost them. But the city boss could say, "Hey, we wanna contract with Russ." I think their, their expense is like a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour to run the police department?
If I did the math right, it's two hundred and seventeen an hour.
Okay, two seventeen. So that means all you guys in thirty-eight dollars an hour would have to subsidize Osceulusus police protection. Is what we're coming down to. So do you guys all wanna do that?
I don't.
Do you wanna do that, Russ?
No, no.
Do you understand a little bit what I'm saying on the other side, though?
Yeah, we can hire ten more deputies. I mean, they got more police, Osceulusus has more police force than we have deputies.
Which you bring up another interesting point that I made a note with you, Mark. I'm telling you, we can't take on no more contract hours without more minutes per hour. Happy to, so.
So if you're gonna hire another deputy, if you're gonna take on more hours, what's it gonna cost to hire a deputy? Go back to the deputy pay again, right?
Go back to that, yeah.
Yep. So it's gonna cost us another hundred thousand a year.
I don't think, I don't think the city's complaining about your patrol. You know, we, we work, I think everybody's fine with what they got now. You know, the hours that you're putting in now. They're waiting to ask us for more hours.
But the unincorporated citizens are subsidizing your police protection.
So is Osceulusus, so is New Sharon.
Yeah, but we're part, the, the city of Beacon, people in City Beacon with the property taxes.
Are paying for part of the paper service.
Subsidizing the law, you're right.
We all pay that property tax.
No.
Sixteen and seventy-eight cents, a thousand.
We don't subsidize anything in the county for the property taxes that we pay in the incorporated, nothing?
Nothing.
Right now, you know, my property tax, I guess, twenty-four cents goes to Beacon, out of every dollar. Everything else goes to county or schools. Right now.
And we pay that too.
You know, seven, seventy-six cents.
That's what I said. Carl Solomon says the sheriff's expenses are a general fund expense. That's, that's the entire county. I think we took not three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars just out of rural people just for the sheriff's expense this year alone.
For property taxes, does any of that go in the general fund?
Those property taxes?
All of our property, everyone's property taxes, none of that go in the general fund?
All that we charge you goes into the general fund.
Now, what I ask you, property taxes, incorporated cities pay and unincorporated, and the rural residents, does any of that go in the general fund?
But see, that's why I say, we charge three dollars and ninety-five cents.
Does any of it go in the general fund? It's a broad question. It's not.
And I'm trying to explain it to you, George. There's two, we have two different taxes, a general and a rural. The general is county-wide, it goes into the general fund. The rural is charged three dollars and ninety-five cents, a thousand, and it, it goes strictly for what the rural people need. It does not go into the general fund, it stays in the rural. And what we charge the entire county stays in the general.
So we are paying part of the sheriff's department already?
You're paying part of the sheriff's department's responsibilities.
But he keeps alluding to there's two different things, sheriff and police protection.
Right, right, right.
So if it wasn't, but I'm just gonna be the devil's advocate here, if it wasn't the state code mandated, that's, that's what you'd be issuing?
Correct.
All of it's been the state code?
Ninety-seven.
When?
Ninety-seven.
Nineteen ninety-seven, what? There's a Supreme Court case, there's a Supreme Court case from nineteen ninety-seven where the Supreme Court has mandated that. And that's where they say that it's not the county's responsibility to do it at a loss and if, if you let one not do it, is it fair to the rest of them?
So do you have a contract agreement drawn up for us communities to take back and look at, or we need to draw one up, our attorneys need to do it, present it to you?
Either way is good. I guess, if you want us to draw it up, we can draw it up. We just need to know what you want in it. You want certain hours of the week, you just want so many, so many dollars? And what, what do you wanna see? Do you wanna, do you wanna?
I don't know. I have to go back and talk to my counsel.
Okay. You know what I'm saying? That's, 'cause they can be as.
Next Monday, in June.
As I said, you're wanting this in July, we have one month.
You're probably gonna have that.
We have one meeting, one council meeting.
Our, our meeting's this third Tuesday of the month. There's no way we can get this all done for you by July.
Nope.
So then you wanna give penalties or?
I'm not coming after you.
Okay.
All I'm here is trying to do is follow the code. I'm trying to honor the law.
So what happens if the city just ignores it, does the one?
Then the county attorney can file injunction to the court and have the court order you to get it.
They'll go to trial like a nine-seven.
Is the county court gonna do it?
If you don't do one, you're gonna do them all?
You're up, Andrew.
Are, are you gonna do it?
There's Andrew, he's the county attorney asking.
Mr. County Attorney, are you gonna do it?
Well, I would say it's my responsibility to enforce the provisions of the code. If I am aware of a violation of the code, it's my statutory duty to address it. So I would say that if a city does not either have their own police force or does not have a agreement with some other entity, be it Mahaska, be it Power Sheet, be it Osceulusus PD, whatever, if they don't have either of those things, they are in violation of the code. And at that point, I would feel obligated to have that rectified. I mean, that, that's just my job, is to make sure that people follow the code.
So we have followed the codes and have our budgets certified already, and now we get hit with this. What about continuing with the agreements that we have agreed upon? And then next year, when it's budget time, then we look at taking care of whatever it is you're wanting?
I don't even know, it's pretty much my counsel, that's why I ask you. Do you have the numbers ready? I mean, my meeting's Tuesday. What am I supposed to do? Am I gonna say no, Mark? You can't just throw this in my lap and say, we gotta have to play the law? Come on, dude. We gotta work together here.
George, I don't know what else to tell you. We told the sheriff in, in February that we're not happy with these contracts. Has he relayed that message to you since February?
That what? That he's not, you're not gonna honor that contract?
We're honoring an existing one. Has the sheriff relayed to you since February when we had the conversation that we're not happy with the existing contracts and there's had to be changes to them? Was that relayed to you?
Well, define changes. Define changes. I mean, everything changes.
We talked about ten hours an hour is not gonna work. We talked about, um, when we go through this budget and the city's paying him for things that, that nobody has any idea what's going on, it's not gonna work, the, the, needs to go back to the general fund, like almost the other counties do it. Was any of this relayed to you?
Not in, not in that context. But was it related to the sheriff in that context?
Yeah, February eleventh. We talked about all this.
And you decided what? You aren't gonna make a change, you aren't gonna make a change. We are definitely going to increase what is going to cost each of the communities to have a trolling service.
I recall ten dollars an hour is not gonna be sufficient to do police protection. And it was, it was decided that we're not gonna let the cities pay him or stuff, but nobody has an idea what's going on with the money and so they have to come back to the general fund.
Not like record.
What do you mean, what do you mean when you say no one has any idea what's going on with my mark?
I'll be, I'll be honest with you.
I know where we would do, well, we would go check still. We would check for body cameras. One time, there, we was like three or four years behind, 'cause they never asked us for anything. And then we, we wrote like a fourteen-time door check.
Is the sheriff's department running in the red now, Mark?
No, we, we fully funded it.
Done, but is it running in the red at this point?
We fully funded it.
It's fully funded.
If, if I can interrupt here, can I, can I please get an answer to my question here when you say, something about money, nobody knows what's going on? What is it you, you wanna know, Mark? Where, where these guys, the, the three cities who buy us equipment instead of paying the general fund? You wanna know where that money, 'cause it's all documented in my office. Be happy to show you the documentation. I mean.
I just, I guess, me personally, Russ, I feel it all needs to go to the general fund. You need equipment, we buy it, we buy it out of the general fund, it's in your budget. I call it horse trading.
Right, if that's what you mean, that's, that's fine. I did not draw up these three contracts that way. They were existing ones. I don't have a problem with that either.
No, I don't.
But you gotta understand that next budget session when I'm here, um, I don't know, thirteen thousand, I'm gonna be asking for thirteen thousand dollars extra in a line item because I don't have this money to rely on. What it was spent on, Mark, the three who bought us equipment, uh, put money toward the matching grant money for the body, or body and in-camera videos. Last year, they put money to Raycom for our different expenses there, and that's what I requested, requested again this year. There's nobody hiding anything from anybody here, Mark. So if you wanted to know where this money was, ask. It's just like if you wanna know anything about the reserve unit, call me and ask me. Don't stop and ask one of my reserves forty-five minutes' worth of questions. That, that's my example I'll give you.
But all I'm saying is, Russ, this is your budget for the year.
Yep.
I would like it on every line, you know, what the money is coming out, where it's going and what it's doing. To me, that's transparency and I run on transparency. Do you understand what I'm saying?
That's why every, that's why every single bill that I sign that comes out of that budget comes across you guys' desk as well.
But you understand kinda what I'm saying, don't you? Where it all oughta go in the general fund, all come back out of the general fund, so.
Whether these twenty-eight E agreements are written to buy us equipment or to pay to the general fund like Eddie Bell says, makes no difference to me. Because it's all going to the county. I didn't draw these, they were existing ones.
No, I didn't either, so.
Yeah, none of us, none of us.
That's why we're having this conversation. This is just a conversation, but if, uh, say, I'll use Chuck, he's in the front. Look, Chuck comes in and says, "Who paid for the body cameras?" I'm going through the budget, say, "The body cameras cost us this." Otherwise, I'd say, "You gotta ask Russ, 'cause I don't have no idea." It's really my responsibility to understand.
Or pick up the phone and call me.
Right. But you understand what I'm saying is this should be planned at the point, to me. I mean, I'm not, 'cause this was done long before any of us done all this. We're just trying to clean it up.
When it first started, Paul Geese went around each city. He says, you know, "We'll give you a little extra patrol for, in your city for this." And that was fine. We're getting a little extra patrol in our city, you know? Otherwise, they could be, you know, somewhere else, you know, or whatever. So we're getting six hours a week extra patrol in our city, or, I don't know, I think it's more decimatic, six hours. I don't think the question is six hours. When it first started, Paul Geese went around each city. He says, you know, we'll give you a little extra patrol for, in your city for this, and that was fine. We're getting a little extra patrol in our city, you know? Otherwise, they could be, you know, somewhere else, you know, or whatever. So, we get six hours a week extra patrol in our city, or, I don't know, I think it's more descentive, six hours. I don't think the question is six hours a week.
Uh, you got him in front of me.
Existing...
So, that was fine, so we get, and, and the sheriff's department benefit from, 'cause we bought stuff for the sheriff's department. We, we wasn't padding nobody's pockets, they was benefit from. And that's over what the county was budgeting.
And that's less that Paul had to ask for in equipment in his budget.
I understand what I call horse trading. To me, it's still horse trading.
I, I don't have a problem with the law.
You and, you and Russ are horse trading on his patrol, which me and you've done horse trading for years personally, but when you do it with taxpayer money, it's a little bit of a different issue to me. Does that make sense?
But it's, it's...
It ain't gonna cost you anymore.
Beacon residents' taxpayers' money ain't your tax. It ain't county taxpayers' money. You're asking for Beacon residents' taxpayer money, right now.
We're asking for the service that Mahaska County provides Beacon, we're asking to be reimbursed, because they have to have the police service. I mean, if you wanna go hire Waplo County, do your police protection, Jim, I don't care.
I'd go check with Oskaloosa, maybe they'll do it.
But it ain't Beacon part of Mahaska County, right?
Right.
It's sitting in Mahaska County Sheriff right there, understand? So, like, they, they do a certain amount of patrol in there, that we pay that or not. You know? I see him sitting there by the post office, on County Road, I see him sitting, they set up by the thing, you know, and there's patrol in there. And that's what, that's what we pay them the, the property taxes for, but you're asking, you're wanting the cities to go ahead and pay for all the...
Police protection now.
Police, but you're asking to pay for the whole...
All of it.
Salary. Yeah, all the salary, which you got figured out there.
What you've paid on, what you've paid on county taxes, not paid anything for police protection. You've paid for the jail?
Paid for sheriff protection.
Sheriff, it's not his requirement to do your protection.
At least in Mahaska County, sitting right there in town.
I think you're gonna find out, the Iowa code and the Supreme Court requires you to have police protection. That's the simple fact of it.
We're getting off, off topic here. Jim's already got police protection. We have two issues here I think we need to get worked out. Uh, the two issues are this. The four that we contract with now, what are we doing this year? I can do their contracts with the bu, the budgets you guys approved. I can do that another year, uh, because I feel between what they pay us and what they have contributed to my budget, and yes, law enforcement and public safety is a big part of police services, or, excuse me, sheriff's services. Then our other issue is, what's gonna happen with the other four cities that do not currently have a contract? I don't wanna be responsible for creating a hardship on anybody here. Don't take this as me lecturing you, none of you three should either, because you represent them just like you do the rural people. It does not cost me forty-two dollars and eighteen cents an hour to patrol any of their towns.
What's it cost you an hour for your deputies, Russ?
Like I explained to you Monday, a week ago Monday, uh, if I use a reserve deputy, okay, we don't have insurance costs, we don't have IFRS, we don't have all the benefits costs. They get ten dollars an hour. They have the exact same enforcement powers as we do, with the exception of making an OWI arrest. Costs ten dollars an hour, and if you figure five dollars an hour, wear and tear on the car and fuel, if I use a full-time deputy, that's where your figures come into play, wage-wise, I'm figuring thirty dollars an hour. But, what I, what I tell you Monday, twenty, twenty-three to thirty, or twenty-three, thirty-two, somewhere around there, because it depends.
Twenty-six, nineteen, I got down. I hope that's what the right number is. Twenty-six, nineteen.
That's what Eddie Mills' contract number was.
Okay, me, that's what it was, okay.
It ranges, you know, if Scott Miller, the highest-paid deputy we have, is doing the contract time, it's gonna cost a lot more than it will if, uh, Corey Wright, a reserve deputy, is doing it. Um...
We talked, we talked about, we talked about the deputies, Russ. I had the auditor pull up what we paid them for patrolling. It comes about a little over eight hours a week. We're not covering the city's contracts with, with reserves. And I've talked to reserve, and they said they patrol the city for an hour, they go drive up and down ninety-two, they go drive up one sixty-three for an hour, they go hit another city for an hour. So, even all those eight hours are not even doing the patrol.
If I bring them in, and I tell them, your assignment tonight is to spend four hours in Eddiville, I want you hitting the Little League games, I want you to go driving by the bar, I want you checking the cemetery to make sure there's nobody out there, uh, doing things they shouldn't be, they spend four hours in Eddiville. If they're out on patrol, or they're volunteering for patrol, yes, they do an hour there, they run to Fremont and do an hour, they swing up through, uh, Rose Hill on their way to Barn City. They may swing over to New Sharon and help Kevin on a call. Okay? If I assign them, and I'm paying them for patrol time, they're doing those hours in Eddiville, or Fremont, or wherever I assign them to do it. That's all part, you two weren't here, when Eddiville wanted to increase their hours, if you remember, Mark, I told both Eddiville and I told the board of supervisors, I can't do this unless you let me add some of the money that they're paying us to that new line item that Sue and, and us created. And that was for the, um, reserve deputies. Okay? If, if a reserve told you, you know, Russ, Russ, uh, told me to go spend six hours patrolling Eddiville, and I'm paying him, and he's not doing it, one of two things happening. I'm not aware of it, it's lying to you, or he's volunteering his time.
Well, I'm just telling you, but the hours we've paid out, it's eight hours, a little over eight hours a week. And some of those hours are not even in patrolling, so...
And, and you're basing that off what, Mark? That, that it's not being done for patrol?
I was just talking to reserves.
Are you, are you saying that we're paying...
You said, we've said, you pick up all the hours in reserves to cover the cheap costs, and it's not happening. There's not, there's not enough recorded hours to cover...
No, they don't do them all, no. No, 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 Mark. If you remember right, back when Eddiville wanted to increase theirs by twenty hours a month, it was. We went forty a month, they wanted to go to sixty. That's what I told you I would need the reserves to do, because I told you then, we don't have enough staff, full-time staff, to even add twenty hours. And if they're not, if they're doing eight a, what'd you say, eight a week, eight a month?
A little over eight and, eight and hour, eight, eight hours a week.
Eight hours a week, that's thirty-two hours. Um, I needed them to cover the extra hours in, in Eddiville.
And that's what I'm telling you, Russ. They've told me that they, they might be up at New Sharon, where the high-line wires are down, guarding the road.
That, that, those deputies were not being paid contract time that night. They were called out because the wires were down, and we called them out. We pay our reserves to assist us with the contract time, and we pay them on certain circumstances to come assist us full-time, guys. That's just the pay part. They probably provide nearly two times that much in volunteer work. That gets back to my other point, Mark. Have a question about my reserve unit, come see me. Doesn't, wouldn't that make sense, instead of undermining my authority with one of my units? Seriously, I'm asking a serious question, wouldn't that make sense?
I, I wouldn't ask the reserves after you, after you said in the public meeting that they pick up the additional hours.
They do, the twenty hours that...
And that's when I looked up the hours that are here.
They don't, they do not, and I've never claimed that they do all our contract time. If you go back to the minutes, maybe Sue can pull that, the, the, the minutes from that. I told you guys, Eddiville wants an additional twenty hours, I've already informed them, we can't do it unless I can use my reserves. I got your permission, you, Dolan, and Willie's permission, to add that new line item, and put these reserves, once they're certified through ILAA, onto payroll as part-time employees.
I gotta get you back to the one, the agreements, with the communities that do not have an agreement with the county. So, that I can take it to my counsel, I need it verified. Are you gonna charge us by the hour, or per capita, or do we get the choice?
I leave it up to you. I mean, I'm, I'm good either way.
How do you want them to figure it, Mark? It's, you gave them the figure per hour.
Yeah.
But how are, how many hours are you wanting them to contract for?
It's up to them. If you're gonna do it by the hour, it's up to them what they wanna spend.
You're gonna have a minimum amount?
I think there has to be, 'cause there has to be some police calls.
Minimum amount of patrol time, or...
Well, I don't know, Mark, if you found anything in the code. I can't find, yeah, the code, or maybe Andrew can answer this question. The code outlines you have, have police protection? Does it outline how much police protection?
No.
And what time of the day we gotta have this thing, you know?
Well, you bring up another interesting point. That's one of the reasons I haven't wanted to raise them. They give us a lot of liberty or freedom. They, you know, Beacon doesn't require, Russ, we're in a contract, but I want you there every Friday night from eight to noon, or eight, excuse me, eight to midnight, and every Saturday night, 'cause that's when our drawings are, kids are out, song's over. They give us the liberty to get out there when we can. That, that's what's something there, too. The numbers you're talking about, Waplo County, Marion County you're talking about, um, the only way I would feel halfway reasonable about charging them that much is if they dictated what hours we were out there, and when we were there, and what special events, and that type of thing.
So, is there...
I think this is, this, this is what Waplo County's done. It charges thirty-five dollars per capita.
Yeah, Mark's...
That's, that's for zero calls, that's for zero hours of patrolling, but that's taking every police call. Because if you, you have a need in your city, the police are supposed to respond first, and so that's what that, zero hours, but it's gonna take care of all your calls. That's how Waplo County's dealing with it.
I'm talking about extra calls, 'cause I know that the sheriff's department's gonna show up.
Yeah.
That's a commodity of all. I just need to be able to put a number in front of my councils so we can make a, a formal decision. Are you, do you want me to do the forty-two dollars and eighteen cents per hour if you go hourly, or how do you wanna do the capita, decide to go that way, per capita? Same amount, or do you wanna do less?
It's a good question. I don't, I didn't, I've not done any of that figuring. I just done by the hour.
I mean, this is kind of a...
That's the reason why it's getting difficult to make this decision, even for you guys, because of short notice.
Well, and part of...
You don't have all your numbers ready.
Yeah, and part of this is a work session. We wanna know what you guys think, too, so we can work at this together and hopefully reach a meeting.
It don't sound like it. It don't sound like it. It sound like you want it, want it next month, but it sounds to me...
Well, the problem is, this twenty-eighty has to be signed next month. This is Eddiville's twenty-eighty. This is the only one I've seen so far, so, uh, but, you know, it's time to sign them.
I've already signed them.
I wish we would've looked at this the first of the year.
Well, we thought, we relayed that. And I didn't even know light needed protection till Andrew come to us last week and said, all them towns need it. So, I found out a week ago, too, Kim, I'm not...
Well, then, I, yeah, how can we sign something when we, we can't come down with a number to finalize? We, we can't draw up a contract, a twenty-eighty contract. We've gotta go back to our councils and talk about this. Give them numbers, give them details. You guys don't even have numbers hammered out, and this is a work session. Well, how, how in the world can we have this ready by July one for you?
I mean, I'd probably, I'd probably give you a number, if you want a number, roughly thirty-five dollars per capita.
Okay, it was thirty-one, now it's thirty-five.
Huh?
Earlier, he had said thirty-one, I thought.
That's what I said.
Thirty-one?
Right, now you're saying thirty-five.
Somewhere in that ballpark, whatever.
Or, or that, how much did that cost you? For that, four thousand...
If we did, uh, per capita, the thirty-one dollars, ours would be four thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. That's half our...
That's half of our part of the tax for the year. Half of them.
And we've already got our, and spent.
Now, how many hours, if we're doing this twenty-eighty that you want it done by July one, how many hours of protection do we get? What do we put in our twenty-eighty? How many hours do we get for that four thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars?
How many do you want?
We don't know.
Well, see, you, you're coming to us, and you're kinda blaming us for something the law requires you guys to have.
We're not blaming you, we're asking you what you want, and...
I'm just telling you, it's costing us, I'm just telling you, it's costing us thirty-seven dollars and some change just for a deputy.
Per hour, per deputy, per year, for the entire year, right?
Correct. It's costing us a little over thirty-seven dollars.
Everybody in Mahaska County is paying, no, I, I take that back, we retract that. You're saying that thirty-seven dollars per hour is what it costs to pay that deputy for an entire year, per salary, out of the average of all of them together, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, the county people, the cities of Oskaloosa, the city of New Sharon, all, all of that should be incorporated in that thirty-seven dollars an hour, because they are not in our communities for that amount of time. That's, that's all I'm saying. When they serve papers, they can pay and serve a paper, not just by you, the county, 'cause they get paid by the people who serve papers. It, it works both ways. Just give us a number, give us something that's work with.
I'm not, I'm sure I followed your conversation. Thirty-seven dollars an hour is what, is what it's costing us for them to do sheriff responsibilities. Are you wanting the sheriff to do police protection for that amount of money?
What do you want? What, what do you want? Obviously, you're not gonna honor the twenty-eighty, so what are you after tonight?
I'm honoring the twenty-eighty agreements. They expire June thirty, though.
Okay, but what are we gonna do July one?
That's what we're here to try to figure it out.
Okay, so what do you, as supervisors, want from us? We have to take something back to our councils.
I, I'm...
It's June, tomorrow. This next week is June. This city council takes Monday, Monday's Tuesday. If you want me to take it to my council, let's work it out, let's do something.
Forty-two bucks an hour is what I want.
What about the other two? What do you guys want? There's more than one point up there.
I just want the, our active expenses. I want the deputy's salary, his benefits. They, I don't think it's fair for the people of the county to subsidize that. But I do understand your point about the budget deadline.
Well, not just the budget deadline, the twenty-eighty expired.
I know, I mean, the, your budget's already set, I understand that. You can't do it, and some of your budgets aren't that big in the first place.
This twenty-eighty agreement that you can see our city of Eddiville, do you display the whole thing?
That's not, the other one.
The other one? Dixon? With my scratch, is that the one? Am I upside down? Sorry. I got scratch marks on it, but... That's fine, just kinda scoot it over so it's squared up. That's what we agreed to at our last city council meeting, and that is for sixty hours of patrolling. And we, uh, agreed at our last city council meeting, we're paying this, and it's been paid for June, uh, two thousand nineteen to June of two thousand and twenty. And this, what this covers is eighteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars, which gives us sixty hours of patrolling service a month. That's kinda what you need to keep, have to take back to your city council. So, when I take, when I take back the figures, what I think it's gonna be, put figuring, it's gonna cost us an initial nine hundred and fifty dollars a month using your figures, and the city council's going, we've already budgeted, you know that. So, instead of the sixty hours, we're gonna have to roll back to what we've, uh, budgeted for, of course, it'd be about thirty-fiveish hours instead of sixty, because we've already budgeted eighteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars for the Mahaska County sheriff's services. So, now we're going the opposite direction, because we've already committed our monies for the year in, uh, March fifteen.
So, Mary, in, in Eddiville's twenty-eighty then, they set the hours that they want. The county did not set the hours. You said, we want this amount of police protection. They told you how much it was gonna be an hour. So, the city...
They told us how much it was gonna cost.
Eighteen thousand dollars?
Just the hours of protection.
Eighteen thousand dollars.
We're not going Miami.
So, if they're gonna go with forty-two dollars an hour, we choose to go the hourly rate, is there a state minimum that we need to abide by?
Are you going forty-two dollars for an hour, or...
Not that I know of.
According to our way, he's gonna find...
I don't think there is.
So, we can set...
How many hours?
An hour, two hours, three hours.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I need to know.
Yes, ma'am?
I, I don't think you can hear me, I'm running, but, um, I, I just need a clarification, uh, on what the, um, the sheriff's department is doing now versus the current definite police protection. What is the difference that we would be? What is the service that we're going to receive? And can that be from the sheriff's department, or can that be from another, like...
Wherever.
The Oskaloosa, or...
But if the sheriff's department was to provide us that extra protection, police protection?
Janet, these contracts are written up, or the, the contract is to provide additional coverage above what we do already. Uh, you know, any, any call Rose Hill would go to, but it, it's for, um, extra traffic enforcement, extra patrol, um...
It's, it's, it's your city police. When the, when there's a call comes into the city of Oskaloosa, the sheriff is not the one that responds first, it's the Oskaloosa Police Department. The sheriff can act as a backup, but it's the police response, response... The sheriff can act as a backup, but it's the police response responsibility inside that city limits.
Where does it go? First thing it goes, it goes to watch here. Kirk, or, and then it's rerouted back.
That's just for fire?
Is that just for fire? So the police protection, it automatically goes to the nine o'clock center here?
I think all your calls automatically come here.
So, if, let's say that we just grabbed, we decided to go with the Oskaloosa Department, does that mean that that takes away from their police?
You'll, you'll have to have a contract with the Oskaloosa Police, Oskaloosa City Council.
The Oskaloosa City Council.
And then...
We have to look at another account, another council to coordinate with, so June's that.
We'll have to discuss all of this.
Right, I just, I just need clarification.
All right, you can go to Oskaloosa, you can go to the Oskaloosa City Council as a manager and ask him if he's interested in providing police protection.
Then we have to define what that means.
Well, it's police protection.
So what you're saying, we, we've got to take back to our council that you want forty-two dollars an hour, and we've got to choose how many hours you want. Is that all right with you, Russ? The city chooses how many hours? Four, you got, you got to say...
It's always been, the number of hours has always been your decision.
Well, they kind of set it for, so we just went along with it, you know, we, we tried to work with them on it, you know?
Right, I'd call the city of Oskaloosa City, see if they're interested in doing it, do it cheaper.
Well, you don't give us much time. We've got a council meeting, and then, then you want to, you want to, our agreement's up. One council meeting, we can't even, we can't even make one, one vote on it, all right? We ain't even got time to bring it up, put it on the agenda. I, I really wish you guys would listen to the sheriff. And we have what I, is... He's relatively sure that he can get this thing through another year. We need to have this meeting, at least the city of Eddieville, on our 2080 agreement over Mahaska County, end of February next year, most of the time, reset the budget.
I agree. Or earlier, or earlier, because these guys got several...
Or earlier.
I got a budget.
When's your budget, Russ?
If I have to take this back...
And start working on my...
Those are years.
But I don't present it till January.
And that's a shame. Where we going to get the money? That's the first thing you're going to say.
My budget's established. Isn't everybody...
They asked me, they asked me. Don't, don't the county have their budget set already?
Yeah, that's what we talked about this in February, we told the sheriff the things we have to change.
This is the first time I've heard that.
What do, what do you want us to do, Jim? We talked about this in February with the sheriff, and nobody said they've heard about it.
No, we haven't.
So it's our fault?
Well...
Did you vote on it?
It was in a work session, all three of us were here, yes. It's in the minutes.
You guys had the minutes, didn't you, Mark? Didn't you have the minutes?
Had it in the minutes.
I've got to put this back on, you guys are making the decision, you're not listening to the sheriff.
No, you can say that, but we're not the one needing police protection. Did you come to us and make sure everything's going to be the same?
Yeah.
No?
No, we, we asked, that's what we were told, that's what Russ told us.
So there's a problem someplace between the three, the, the county, the individual carrying it out in the city.
The only thing I've got clear is we have to have this, period. We don't have an option, period. But, I don't know, our budget's done, we're probably the smallest community here, and I can tell you that, uh, seven, eight thousand dollars is going to be a punch in the gut to our town.
You're talking almost ten thousand, Russ.
So...
You don't have it.
So what do I tell the unincorporated taxpayers that subsidizing your town for your police protection?
That you guys are...
I'm not even talking about the unincorporated, when, when we tell eleven thousand five hundred people in Oskaloosa?
Somebody's got to make up this difference, you understand that, right, Jim?
I understand that, but you can't do it within one month, say, "Hey, we need it right now." No, you can't do it in one month, you got to, you got to let us, at least wait until the budget comes around again, and we can budget for it. You know what, you, you understand that?
Oh, I understand, Jim, but we had the conversation with the sheriff, and they never got back to you. And nobody came and asked us, so...
Why didn't you guys, because our council meeting told us about it, tell us about this.
I heard it from a neighbor. We were notified from the board.
Yeah, you guys, you guys drive through Beacon all the time, and first Tuesday of every month, we have a council meeting, welcome stop, you've been there once. You know, the sheriff told you, he can make this work this year.
The sheriff's just telling us a lot of things, but I'm just telling you right now, the city of Oskaloosa, the city of New Sharon, and everybody else in the county is subsidizing the police protection. That's how it's working.
Is it, is that how it's been for the last, I think it's been about ten, eleven years we've been doing this? The number of 2080 agreements?
We're a good guy, going like, like Swift.
And some of this that brings it on is what it costs us to hire a deputy and keep him employed. I mean, ten years ago is probably half of what it is today. So, the numbers ten years ago might have worked fine. We could buy new cars for half the money and, you know...
Taxes, property taxes went up in the last ten years, too. In county.
So is everybody else's, Jim?
There's, there's no way that we could wait one year and just come in like...
We have a crime capital.
Pardon?
If we wanted, if, there's no way that you, as supervisors, would be willing to hold off for one more year so that we can get this in our budgets and not come after us, because we don't have the 2080 agreement?
You're going to have to have an agreement, whether it's for three dollars an hour or forty dollars an hour, there, there needs to be a contract.
Okay.
To make it honest, there needs to be a contract.
I understand.
And then, and then, and then from there, let's, let's just do it legally, and then from there, just how much we're going to subsidize it until...
I didn't even know this existed until last month.
This is all new to me, too.
Yeah, that's all we're trying to do.
I mean, that's why we call this a work session.
When was, when was the original...
We're in a rock and hard spot, too, we thought the word was going to get out.
We talked to Russ about it some in the budgeting time. I don't know, we get them in January.
We talked about this in February, Jim.
Well, you said he didn't know about the 2080.
Well, they're just coming up to re-sign. I mean, I knew we were doing...
They've never been through before, but, I'll be honest, what happened, supervisors were not happy with a twenty percent raise for two sheriff deputies.
So now, so, so you're, you're putting it on all the cities.
So what happened was, Russ said, "I'm going to take out of my new car expense, I'm going to use Beacon's money for the police protection to reimburse the new car expense, I'm giving the deputies a twenty percent raise anyway." And that's when, that's when the conversation pursued, that, no, that's not a good way of doing business. Everything should be upfront, transparent, and these 2080s need to change. Because ten dollars an hour, we can't do it, it's, we don't think it's just be paying, the city's paying the sheriff over and above what he comes to us and tells us he needs in his budget, so...
I, I understand where you come from now. You've got that little squabble going on, you want...
Well, they're just...
Everybody else did pay for it.
Not to pay for it, how, how's, how can the taxpayer justify a twenty percent raise to employees? And those employees are providing the police protection, but you're, but they're not...
So if there is no patrol per hour, then what do you, what do you propose, because I'd like to take both of those back to the city council? What do you propose that the cities come up on the 2080 agreement? Because, and I apologize for interrupting you at this point, we have to have police protection, correct? Or some sort of, however that's worth it, correct?
So, the code requires either that a city has their own chief police, their own police force, or there's an intergovernmental agreement with some other entity that provides for police protection. It doesn't say how many hours you need for police protection, it doesn't say how much you charge for police protection, just that there is some agreement. I think in this case, it's a little bit different. Because as, as Russ said, some sheriffs take the view that if there is no agreement with the county to provide police protection, that the sheriff will not respond to the calls. That's not, if I understand, Russ's position. That Russ will respond to calls regardless of whether there is an agreement or not. So, the question is, how many hours do you want above and beyond for regular patrol? It could be one hour a month, it could be one hour a week. That is, is a policy decision by your communities and figuring out the number of hours. But as long as there's some agreement of any kind, that satisfies them. There's no requirement that it be sixty hours at Eddieville, or five hours at Eddieville, that's just a question of what your citizens want in terms of having police patrol your city.
Correct.
That's the total decision on your part.
Correct, if I look at that, that example, Waplo County, there were zero hours of service and once they still paid, that's how it all came down. So, even though the sheriff says he will provide special security for police protection, that agreement still has to go through the board supervisor. Correct.
So let me clarify the question. So your question is, at least in Waplo, there are some communities that have zero hours of regular patrol.
Correct.
But yet, they still have an agreement with the county to pay a certain fee.
Yes, okay.
And your question is, for Mahaska, are you still required to pay the county for Russ to choose to come out to your community, even though there's no agreement? Is that the question? I just want to clarify.
Well, we satisfied the code, if we had an agreement with supervisors, supervisors have to approve such agreement, if we say, we're just going to enter an agreement, have no patrol hours, and we want to pay zero dollars, that's not going to go. The board of supervisors is not going to approve that. So, that, that agreement for zero hours of patrol, I, I don't see the cities up there, but the one on the bottom right, I can't read the numbers, I apologize.
Sure.
Kirkville?
Hold on, let's take Eddieville right there, what'd you figure out Eddieville's gonna have?
Thirty-five thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. And this, and this bottom dollar is thirty-five dollars per capita, zero hours. It would be provided either through answering calls for service, or patrol hours provided by the Waplo County Sheriff's Department. So the thirty-five dollars per capita is what Waplo is using just, just to play police and answer calls, no patrolling.
So that, again, I mean, I can't speak for their sheriff, but at least on these figures, that's the difference. Whereas Russ is willing to answer call, calls regardless of the agreement, whereas I believe how it works in Waplo County.
Do we legally have to have an agreement?
You have to have an agreement for police protection, but it doesn't say how many hours you need or rate for that sort of thing. See what I'm saying?
Correct.
So, that's why it's a little bit different in Waplo, because at least, my understanding, based solely on this document, not talking to anyone else, but just in this document, is my understanding that whether they answer calls, that may be a reason why zero hours of patrol there will still charge them. Because the sheriff there, he's still going to be answering a call for service as an opportunity.
But their board supervisors have to approve that agreement, even if it's, no matter what the monetary value is?
Uh, no. So...
Who does that agreement?
Well, they do, because they're the political subdivision, and they're the representatives of the political subdivision.
I, I, I think, well, let me just clarify his question. I think his question was, does the sheriff, or does the board of supervisors have to approve an agreement where the sheriff will respond to service calls? Is that your question?
We have, well, we have to have the agreement for police protection for a number of calls.
Yes.
Okay, so, that agreement has to go through the board supervisor?
That is true.
Okay.
For police protection, yes.
That, that's my question, so, my question, now that you've answered mine, that, that was my question, the supervisors have to approve that agreement? Well, no matter what the monetary value is, if we have zero hours, if we do this, if we do that, that agreement has to come through this supervisor regardless of what Russ said. These supervisors have to go through that board, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's the board of supervisors' responsibility, and only they can enter into a 2080 of this thing. Yeah, so ultimately, they would have to approve that.
So we have to have a 2080 in order to be, in order to go Iowa code?
Uh, well, either with Mahaska County or with some other entity, with some of that. With some of that, yeah, with some.
Correct, okay, that answers my question.
Yeah.
So, in, in order to go back to my council, if I was to go back to the council and say, patrol hour's going to cost this, just a general contract with the county saying that the county will provide police protection, what are your numbers for that?
Just, just to answer the calls?
Yes, just to abide by the Iowa code.
No patrol, just the calls?
Correct.
Okay, because, wait, I see what you're getting at, George, but let me...
I want to give them both options.
Okay.
I don't want to go to them and trangle them. I want to give them options, and I want to tell them, you've got this, this, and this, and I wanted to discuss it, and then I wanted to make a decision.
But, but I want to make one point here that I think people are missing. We added another deputy to cover a lot of these cities because Russ was shorthanded, and that cost the county a hundred grand to add a deputy, basically.
Were they shorthanded because they spent too many hours patrolling the cities?
You added another deputy to finish the twenty-four hour contract, or, coverage, not to fulfill this?
But if you didn't have no patrol time in any cities, and you took all them hours out, you could get rid of one deputy?
The CAT system says nobody had any calls yet.
They were still doing these patrol contracts.
Oh, oh, with the calls?
Yes.
Um, I did ask about that, I haven't received an admission.
That addition deputy that...
But you understand what I'm saying?
I, I know that.
As part of, as part of the formula, George, we've...
Eighty hours, fifty hours a week, and I don't know, I haven't seen all the...
I tried to get the calls for service a year ago, was unable to.
Doing patrolling?
Andrew tried to get them here the last two weeks, we're not able to even get the calls for service to each entity.
So if these guys would all say, "No, we don't want police protection," you could probably get rid of one deputy and not have to worry about it?
Is it capital that you're going off by, what, what do I bring in the council?
Let's talk after the meeting.
Huh?
Let's talk after the meeting, because we're getting off topic there.
But you understand...
See, how many, how many calls do you have a year?
I think I told you guys that...
See, that's where we're at, too, we have no idea either.
You have no idea.
See, that, this whole thing's a...
Did you base it off of the hourly wage of the...
I have it stretched out, it's hard to stretch myself.
For patrol, you base it off the hourly wage?
Correct, yes.
Right.
So, I'm thinking, something, I got to take some...
But if you have less workload, you shouldn't need less...
We got to waive, got rid of these forty hours or these four contracts.
I've got a suggestion, Mark. Gentlemen.
Yes. Yes, Kim.
That you have to have this agreement by July 1st.
We don't need it.
You don't need it?
No, we do.
Right, just to clarify, it's not the county that needs it.
Right. So...
Don't say that, George, we're having, we invited you here to try and figure this out.
Okay, so why can't we, just a second?
Go ahead, Kim.
Why can't, why can't we go back to our councils, come up and say, "Okay, we, we need to do this 2080 agreement, it's got to be by July 1st, even though some of these It's got to be by July one, even though some of these towns have never had one. We can just put in this contract for now, for a year, that we would like to contract service with the Mahaska County Sheriff's Department, and don't put any amounts in there for coverage for a year. By the time January rolls around and we're working, thinking ahead to our budget, we say, okay, let's figure out numbers. We know that they're in the red, they need money, whatever. Do we do per capita? Do we do per hour? Figure out our hours that we want patrol in our towns.
Find the average.
You can do a little research, you know, we can ask Russ, hey, how often do you come to Lightton, you know, in a month? I mean, if we want to make it fair, I mean...
Would that be fair? Wouldn't that be fair to you guys? It'd be fair to us, because we don't have the money right now to throw extra money at.
And then by, you know, after we get our budgets done, July first of next year, we come back and say, hey, this is the amount we want to do.
That's what everybody's paying per capita right now. If you want to look on the board?
I can. Eighteen forty-two.
Beacon is paying seven dollars and forty-three cents a capita. Fremont's eight dollars and sixty-one cents. New Sharon's a hundred dollars. Oskoos is a hundred and sixty-five. University Park is eight dollars and eighty-six cents. Nettiveille is eighteen dollars and forty-two cents.
You know, suppose we give copies of that?
Want a copy right there? I can make a copy of mine.
Yeah, we'll give you one. Our problem is going to be, we've already signed our twenty eighty agreement. We approved it in the city council meeting last, our last city council meeting. I'm going to have to go back to them and say, no good, the kids rules. And if we want to have the same amount of patrol hours from Mahaska County, it's going to cost us additional, additional nine hundred, nine hundred fifty dollars per month. If you want to increase, well, we've already budgeted, and increase that also, and if we have to recertify our budget, or do you want to decrease the patrol hours in order to meet what we already budgeted? That's where we're going to be. We either have to recertify our budget, because we've already, actually, I believe we've already paid to them.
You haven't paid for, starting July one of twenty nineteen through June thirty of twenty.
Can you have, is there a city check to you?
Mostly you shouldn't have, because it's not been approved.
It ain't signed yet.
Yeah, you're, the sheets paying the quarterly on our existing cycle.
All right. Anyway, that's, that's going to be our dilemma. But what I would like to go back to the council says, here it is in writing, because we'll have to, we'll have to have the twenty eighty agreement rewritten with new figures. We will have to do that ourselves in return. And that's where the new numbers will be put instead, whether it be more for, more dollars spent or less hours of patrol, because we're already budgeted.
Is there any towns here that doesn't understand the county's position, why we're asking for this?
Did you give a raise to the deputies?
Pardon that?
Did you sit down and go, bigger? Deputies got a raise, so they got to find the money somewhere.
We agreed to honor the agreement that was made. When I stepped on the board, I saw a lot of things which we took care of years and years ago, hasn't been. We're trying to please send this up.
Right now, if I did my math...
The raises have nothing to do with coming after you for money, Jim.
You said, you said that a little bit ago.
Where he was going to get the raise from is taking out the new cars, he's going to use your money to reimburse for the new car. But so, since we're paying the deputies more, the question is, why doesn't the police protection cost more if you want to contract with us?
Supervisor wouldn't give his deputies a twenty percent raise. We said, you got your budget, you do with it what you want, because you're the sheriff. We did not agree. Sue Brown got a percent and a half. Supervisor's got a percent and a half raise. We didn't get twenty percent raises.
City council, Beacon, never got nothing.
I know. And we're glad you do it.
So if the deputies are getting twenty percent raises, how come you don't expect to pay more for a police protection because you're using the same deputy?
What these gentlemen are not telling you guys is, this is per the pay schedule, they were hired under, under a union contract. I expressed to them during our meetings what a poor contract that was for the county and the employees. This isn't, I didn't just pull it out of my, out of thin air, I want to give these two guys a twenty percent raise.
Russ, there was no top in that, in that contract with the unions. You said this was promised to them by Paul DeGeese when he hired them. It wasn't in the contract, it wasn't in the union negotiations contract to give a deputy twenty-five, a twenty percent raise.
No, none of the percentages were listed out there. We discussed this, he was, they put him where he started them, because they had years of experience, and they are ILA certified. They do the same amount, they do more work than some of the others talked out of.
Any other questions?
You never have asked, said if you'd wait a year, I guess. You don't want to wait a year, you want the money now. So we can restart our budget?
I think that would be a question for the county attorney, because he's the one that didn't, not use the money.
Well, the supervisor wants him to.
Well, I know that, but I think the county attorney is the one that, you know, and he's bound by law, too. But if he, would he come after us just because we don't have an agreement, or because we can't give you the money, because it's not in our budget? He'd come after us because we don't have an agreement?
The only, again, all the code requires is that there is an agreement of some kind with some entity. As long as you have some agreement with some kind, that satisfies the requirement of the code, whether it's for one hour a year, whether it's for one hour a month, whatever that is.
But that doesn't work, Andrew, if you don't satisfy their want for a certain amount per hour or per capita.
Yeah, so...
These guys can't contract, they can't draw up a contract, say, we'll give the sheriff's office a dollar a year, and we want an hour in that year, because they won't approve it.
That's what I'm getting at. That's what I was asking for, for supervisor. What can I bring back from this award session, right? So give me some options. Let's discuss some options. I mean, thirty-fourty-two, or thirty-one, or thirty-five.
Right now, it costs...
Or give me an option in a kangaroo court.
Right now, it costs us a hundred and fifty-five dollars an hour to run our sheriff's office. That's what it costs the county, a hundred and fifty-five dollars an hour. If I take the total budget, divided by eighty-seven hundred and sixty hours, a hundred and fifty-five dollars an hour, just to run the sheriff's department.
Is that what you guys budgeted?
Right. That's what we budgeted. So if, if he has to hire another deputy, which I was trying to say earlier, to do this patrolling, it's in this budget. It's costing a hundred and fifty-five dollars an hour, you know, and if you got, you know, that's just what it costs to run it on a, per day, or per hour. So that's what we got to come up with. It's going to come from the taxpayers somewhere. It's either going to come from the whole county, or whatever, but if it's costing us more to do police protection in Beacon than what Beacon's paying, that means somebody out in the middle of nowhere is subsidizing Beacon's police protection. And this is where we're trying to make it as fair as we can, because a guy that lives three miles south of Lightton don't care if you have police protection or not.
Depends if he comes to town.
Huh?
If he comes into town, he might want to know the truth to police protection. I mean, everybody uses all the services wherever you travel.
We, we, that can go on and on, because you drive through the county and he's got there, so...
Yeah, but it is a matter of three miles south of Lightton, it's Oskoos that's subsidizing it. You want Oskoos subsidize Fremont's police protection?
Let me put it this way.
If they come to Fremont, they might want to go to the, you know, so...
How would you feel as a citizen of Mahaska County, if Tracy come to us, which is in Marion County, and say, hey, will you do our police protection for ten bucks? And I say, yeah, it's put on the taxpayers of Mahaska County. Nobody would be happy about that.
And I would not do that, because Tracy residents do not pay any portion of my budget. And I was asked by a community outside Mahaska County, and I refused to do that.
Right, right.
Yeah, but Chillicothe doesn't, we're doing it for a third lesson what Waplo County's doing it for.
How many vehicles in Chillicothe?
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven.
That's where I see the difference.
Right, I understand, Russ, I understand.
Their portion of my budget.
For police protection, just to answer calls?
Yes.
Three thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars.
Your budget has to be paid somehow, so...
With fifteen hours of patrol?
Mahaska or Waplo?
Chillicothe is in Waplo County.
Yeah, that doesn't help.
No, but that's what Waplo County Sheriff's Department and the Waplo County supervisors are doing.
Barb, what's your population?
Yeah, a hundred and seventy-one.
The two smallest contracts we have have four hundred and some residents, so it's really not a, happened, there's not a comparison for Mahaska currently.
Kirk, here's Kirkville in Waplo County. If you was in Waplo County, they'd cost you five thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars for Waplo County Sheriff to answer the police calls.
That's ridiculous.
I'm just telling you, police protection's not cheap. Neither is running the sheriff's department.
Neither is running the town.
I know.
Nothing's getting cheap anymore, Barb.
Laurie?
Question. Yeah, residents, they have to hear about the parties. If they should decide they have to pay the forty-two dollars an hour for so many hours, and they want a little bit more patrolling than that, and they can't afford it, can they contract X amount of hours of reserve patrolling at the ten bucks an hour, or whatever it costs for the reserve, and the X amount of hours at the forty-two dollars an hour from regular sheriff's department? Can we do both? Can we get more patrolling that way in a figure that we can afford?
I'm going to let Russ and Andrew, but from my standpoint, this is where we're at. The reserves are voluntary. They're not mandatory to work anything, it's all by volunteer.
Right.
And so if you want ten hours a week, and every other city wants ten hours a week, that's ninety hours. Can you guarantee ninety hours of volunteer time a week?
It's not necessarily volunteer hours. To answer your question, with our existing staff now, we would have to continue to strengthen our reserve unit. Our reserve unit is not up to that point at this point, at this stage. We don't have enough reserve deputies certified to commit to that. It would create, that would create more bookkeeping expense, keeping track of which are full-time hours, which are part-time hours.
Okay. Next question, suggestion, whatever. You contract for X amount of hours for ten bucks an hour to help save costs and to help us, because Rose Hill can't pay for very many hours, they simply don't have, I mean, you've got half the property tax now if we do this. Can Russ send out reserve? So it's not costing you forty-two dollars an hour. We're paying it, but you could send the reserve. Do you understand? So maybe we have a few less hours, but you're saving money because you're not sending out forty-two dollars an hour, you're sending out ten dollars an hour. So when you have the reserves available, if it's being quiet in Rose Hill, and it's safe to send reserves, then send the reserve. Would that work? And would that, would that help the cash flow situation?
I'm all right with the, it's a budget they've approved for me, I'm all right with the four contracts we have now. It's going to be very difficult with the staff we have, including our reserve unit, to cover four more towns if the number of hours are the same as before we have now. It'll be very difficult. Where am I going with this? Let me ask you, I'll ask to support this. If Rose Hill, you guys want forty-two dollars an hour, if they draw up a twenty eighty agreement for an hour a month, are you guys going to approve that?
Five hundred and four dollars.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
You know what? At this point, I don't have an issue with it. I can't speak to the other two. This is where I have trouble with. We've got a nine-one-one center, we can't even get the calls to service to know who's getting what calls for, I mean, how many a year. And we're supposed to make educated decisions, and we can't even get information. That's where it's frustrating to my end of it.
Yeah, what's frustrating to us is that we're happy with them, because they come out and patrol our town when they're in the area, but the state is telling us we have to do this.
And the state's telling us the same thing. We're both in the same boat, it's just how we're going to compromise to figure, make this work.
Exactly, so like he said, if we wanted to write up an agreement saying we want one hour per month, it's only five hundred.
Or let's take it even more to, let's take it more to the extreme. Draw up a twenty eighty agreement, you agree to pay forty-two dollars a month, or per hour, and you want one hour of extra patrol per year. Is that something you guys would approve?
Yeah. Do you approve that?
At some point, we're going to need to do the service calls.
That's all you need, is one hour of patrol. We'll save, we'll save it up on the backside by not doing police protection, that we won't have a problem with, I don't think.
Does he say he would answer?
Does that make sense? Because we're losing money on it now, so anytime I can get out of a deal losing money, I'm all for it.
But you have to understand, though, too, though, that Oskoos is subsidizing all this.
Well, I know they're helping.
You know what I'm saying? So how do we answer to that eleven thousand five hundred, they're paying a hundred and sixty-four dollars per capita for police protection?
But how many calls you're answering to them compared to Rose Hill?
That's what I'd like the information to know, too.
You know, because I guarantee you're answering a lot more calls.
It's a lot busier here.
Yeah.
Eleven thousand five hundred people, and it's got more business. I agree a hundred percent, but until we, until we're able to get the information...
Red.
I think just to provide some, some clarity. The sheriff as an independently elected official can decide how and when he wants to respond to calls for service. So I believe it's the sheriff's position that he will respond to calls for service, regardless of any agreement with any incorporated town. If that's true, then we're only really talking about, at this point, the patrol hours above beyond calls for service.
So we still have to have the agreement with an entity saying we have to do police protection if you answer calls. He can say it all he wants. He can say, hey, give me a thousand dollars, fine, give me a thousand dollars, just give me a thousand dollars, well, he just always give you a thousand dollars. That being right, according to state code. That's what I was asking for, is if we don't want calls, if we just want calls for service, or we want this piece of shit for the board supervisors to satisfy the state, what is the requirement from the board superintendent?
No, no added or additional patrol, no craft...
Nothing additional. I think what he's trying to say, mind mine anyway, is that in his agreement, he's going to write down zero hours.
Right.
And zero amount.
Right.
For police protection.
Correct.
I'd like that to be an option. In the twenty eighty agreement, would the state even go for that? Because it's a contract for police protection. Because it don't state how many hours it has to have.
Yes, that's true. Again, the code did not say what the agreement has to say.
It says protection, right.
It just says protection. So, yes, if you want, I mean, if it's approved by all the entities, you could have an agreement that says no additional patrol hours, just providing the police protection. If Russ is willing to do that out of his current budget, as long as the board approves that, then that'd be fine. Yes, that, that would be, that would be acceptable, yeah. It's a, it's a...
And it's my question.
It's extreme on the other end. Yeah, that's extreme on the other end, but yeah, that's, at least it satisfies the requirement of the code.
But it satisfies the requirement of the code, and that's what I'm asking the board supervisors, is what, what, no, what would you want for a monetary value? Because you're trying to sign off on it for free, you made that clear. So what, I think, we...
You want absolutely, let me get this straight, George, you want absolutely no patrol?
I want to throw that out there as an option. I want to give the, I want to give the council some options. So by throwing the option out there, if sheriff's department provides no extra patrol, it's going to cost the city this amount. For patrol, it's going to cost this amount on top of this amount, because nothing comes for free. I understand that. I'm not asking for any free.
Right.
So right now, I believe it's forty-five hundred dollars. If we took all the hours for service out of that, and brought it to you, it's either forty-two or forty-five, I called it in front of you. If we brought that to you and said, zero hours of service, extra patrol, would you as a supervisor satisfy the state requirement? Approve that agreement so we can get in through the...
So you want absolutely no patrol?
That's what it would say. If that, if that said that, no extra patrol.
Just want to answer the...
I'm still going to pay you the...
All I want to do is answer the calls. If a call comes in, University Park, he goes, but he don't patrol your streets, or check the stop signs, or check any speeders or nothing.
I want to provide that option.
Before you do that, George, just cut your hours back to where it is, where it's forty-two dollars an hour. That's what they said they want. Cut your required hours back.
I agree, and I just want, I'm looking for options.
Right, I understand that.
That would be to get you by this, next budget year.
Options to get us through the budget year.
And then next, following year, you'd be ready to budget something to cover the expenses?
More, right? Depending on what you came up with, what we decided, or you came out with, with the...
I mean, I think you guys are a little bit missing the point. We're just trying to cover the cost for the whole town. Okay.
At all.
Because if, if I'm concerned, if you don't get no patrol, he ain't gonna come to your town.
No, he's gonna come if somebody calls.
Right.
He's gonna answer the certain service calls.
Right.
Call the service.
So you're not gonna approve an agreement if I were you.
So if you do no patrols, you can't cut your staff. If you don't have to patrol any of these towns, you don't.
We eliminated this time. Not unless we cut our twenty-four hour coverage.
So you're not staffing people to cover these towns?
The only additional staffing I've done is the reserves for twenty hours additional. Paul was doing the same number of hours, excuse me, the previous sheriff was doing the same number of hours. One less deputy. And depending on the day, three to four hours less coverage for the entire county per day. Paul did not have twenty-four hour county coverage. I increased it to that. That's what that additional deputy was, increase that. So we had somebody on duty twenty-four hours. So.
Definitely come on, I'll ask definitely. Definitely come on when, before I was on the board?
Wilkie was. Rainey was sixteen, Wilkie was two thousand and seven. Yeah, yeah.
It's before all, both part times. I think I could live with, um, something like that. There, there's a proposal that George or Andrew said this year, but the next year, we're gonna have to pony up. Understand, I understand the budget space, I'm not schoolwork before it comes at you after your budget, your thing there. Kind of screwed. So we're giving a decision tonight, but right now, I'd be leaning that way. Give you a time to make a decision just.
You cut our hours back, still, if you had our hours back to allow what we're budgeting for already till next year?
Leave the monetary, the same, cut the hours back to reach forty-two dollars an hour?
That, you know, that's all we could do.
That's what I would recommend.
That's all we could do.
Then you don't have to rewrite your budgets. That's what we'll have to do.
Would you agree that? You guys gonna have to accept our 2080 agreement?
At least it's covering our cost in writing.
You could cut our hours back, we're talking like one and a half hour a week?
I think I'd figure mine is two hours a week. That would even.
It's a service call.
Plus service call.
That's, that is a service call, an hour, hour and a half a week.
He spends more time a week going back and forth to home. How many times does he go back and forth to home, Jim? I don't think he carries. Won't get charged too much money.
Sounds like Ron McCree now.
For the cities who are not contracting, what do you guys need them to do? Or not currently contracted.
They're, they're need to be a contract to be, to be legal, to be in code.
So now we've got the incorporated cities that have a contract to take over. If I understand right, if our council's approved it, if we're just, we're just the voice of the. Now what about the other corporate things, the people that don't have a contract to do? What do they need to bring back to you guys for you to satisfy the code, for them to satisfy the code of law?
I would say they gotta decide whether they want patrol or not.
If they don't want, they need to have, they need to have the two options. So if they don't want patrol, why does it start calling them?
Remember, we don't have it in our budget, we have no clue.
I would say probably for this year that if you're not gonna patrol, but ain't no different than it has been the last camp. But before next budget season, we're gonna have to have a conversation to figure out exactly what it's costing people to provide the city of Lighten police service.
We need to know.
Huh?
We need to know what's costing them.
Yep. And that's always hard because, you know, he can use reserves, he might not be. How you gonna base that, what it cost off the calls that they responded to, Lighten or?
I think it has to be part of the formula. It should be part of the formula.
Yeah. I mean, because the little bit is, a town with the bars is gonna probably get a lot more calls than a town without a bar. You look to, you south of me? Huh? You got a bar south of you? I never knew that. Huh?
Yeah, there's a couple of private ones in there.
But you know what I'm saying, Jim? Them things add to the cost of police protection. I'm sure Russ will tell you a town with a bar in causes more trouble than one without. So if we could get the data on the calls going to them towns, we would have some idea. We're not trying to make money here, we're just trying to cover the cost for all the taxes. Okay. I understand that. But the problem is when you come up and say, hey, we want an extra ten thousand dollars next month, you know? That'll stay, that, that'll rock. That's what you said at the first meeting.
It is, I'm not saying, it is frustrating because we did talk about this in February.
We didn't know about it. Right. I don't have a full-time job, but I don't have time to come up with calculations. And the problem a little bit is, these 2080s are done from July for, you know, the middle of the year, so. We, I mean, we got ours, and ours are for February, and we voted on it, and it's already, James already sent it back, it's signed, it's sent back in.
Part of the problem, we need, the conversation needs between your city council and the supervisors. Could we not go through the sheriff? The other counties that's in the 2080s, the council and the supervisors communicate. There's no middle person.
How about the supervisor coming to a meeting once?
If I, if I can interject, it's not strictly the cities or the supervisors. Because I am not willing to give up the autonomy of my office. I'm not gonna forfeit that. And if I, my office is providing the service, whatever the numbers are in the amounts, I need to say it now.
You're, you're correct, Russ, it has to be approved by you as well.
Right.
And I know it, I, I understand, I've always understood, this isn't just my decision. You keep bringing it up, I've already told you, I'm not denying this conversation took place in our budget meetings, but I do not remember it. If you guys had told me, I want you to go to every one of these councils and inform them, we are unhappy with these 2080 agreements, I would have done that. I don't remember, I'm not denying it happened, I do not remember it, okay? But again, you said this is between you and the cities. It is not completely between you and the cities if my office is providing the service.
And your office don't have to provide service to any of them if you decide not to.
And, and my, you're right, but in my opinion.
You don't have to provide the police protect, you have to go there on a call, but you do not have to provide.
Well, it's a police, it's a police responsibility first.
Steve, you're, you're partially right because of this law we're talking about, but I certainly would not morally feel right about that.
Right, I do, I wouldn't either. Don't get me wrong, I'm just trying to lay it all out there.
Right, that's why I, I've never refused to go to Kioma or Rosehill or Barn City or, or Lighten.
I don't think anybody here said you refused to go, so.
It, it has happened. It's not gonna happen here with my office.
Right.
It's happened in other counties, there was a threat of that years ago in this town.
Yeah.
There was a threat of that from a sheriff way back.
I would have calls come first, you know, who they top of.
But that's not, that, that, I would not feel morally right with that.
I wouldn't either.
It's just, it's no different than, if I'm driving through town and I hear a domestic call coming. You know, I told you, in, in Oskaloosa, the PB's got primary jurisdiction, I have secondary. There's no primary or secondary. If I can get to that domestic first, I'm gonna respond first.
Right.
I'm not gonna wait, okay, I can't get there until the city officer gets there because this is their jurisdiction. It's all jurisdiction, I have jurisdiction, my office has jurisdiction everywhere in this county.
Correct.
Yeah, I've, I've rambled on now.
And that's, and that's true for Fremont and Barn City.
Absolutely, it's everywhere.
Eightyville. There's, they got the screens up to know who's closest, if the state troopers closest, the state troopers gonna get there first. So I mean, it's, it's all of them working together.
As a citizen, I would just like to let you supervisors know how much I appreciate Russ. And I don't think that there's anybody here in this room in a town that doesn't. Since he has took over, somebody's at every council, there is much more presence in the communities. It's, it's just a hundred percent better. You've got a good deal here.
Well, I appreciate that, Lori, but that's not why we're here.
I know.
See, that goes back to.
It kinda seems like he's getting kind of dumped on a little bit.
As it goes back to, it's not the sheriff's responsibility to go to the city council, it's the chief of police's responsibility. If you wanna follow the Iowa code, we don't, we don't have to follow the Iowa code, and we don't have to do it if we don't want to. I'm just telling you that, that how the code is supposed to work.
You know what? We appreciate him coming to our city council meetings, and he is welcome and appreciated every single time.
When you lose the personal care that Russ gives, you'll lose your, you have, you'll lose your cap.
And that's pretty easy.
What did we decide on the cities who do not currently have a contract? Would, has there been a decision made yet?
Well, it needs to be a contract.
The way I understand the contract is business is the way it's been done till next budget season. But I was gonna ask Andrew, and then I got interrupted. Can we do these 2080s before budget time, so they know?
Well, yes, you should reach an agreement as to what is gonna be, what the agreement's cost is, so you get an off sale.
I mean, this is what's brought this all on. Nobody's really reached an agreement on something that's due the first of July, so.
I mean, I would recommend probably having this conversation in November.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Because Russ is gonna have to submit his budget to you in January. But Russ won't be able to do that till he knows what he's gonna be doing in these communities.
And really, as a supervisor.
Same timeline for these folks, too.
Yeah, and everyone kinda needs to know what to expect.
And the thing is, I really, as a supervisor, cannot approve Russ' budget till I know what this says. So I need to know.
When you say, when you say nobody has approved a 2080 agreement, although your city has and hasn't had it, but we have it.
You guys have said.
We've approved it, you have.
Right, we have it.
And we approved it from the information that was provided to us.
Right. Yes, I'm not disagreeing with that. And that's one problem I have, being a new supervisor going through, this is just Russ's budget. One point three million dollars, trying to figure out everything in three days over the whole county, a twenty-two million dollar budget. And this one I just didn't catch on to yet. I do now, I understand it. And that's why I'm asking Andrew, can we take care of the problems so we never have this conversation again?
We have to have a conversation every year depending on what.
Yeah, and it's gonna be up to you yearly thing.
Every year.
Every year. So I guess I'm just throwing that out, and this is just a work session, we're just throwing out ideas to fix. We need to do this like October or whatever, so we go back to the, approve it at the first meeting. Because Russ needs to know what it says. Well, I could tell you anything I want, but the council, I got a lot of council people down there who's gonna tell you something totally different.
When, when Russ tells you guys, I can live with this budget, I can make things work. And you turn to Russ and say, no way. That's when we need to be informed and said, we're having another work session before we go to work and create our own budget.
I agree.
But not yet at the end of the thing.
Right.
Obviously, it's gonna have to be.
If Russ says, I can live with this budget, and you go, we're all behind you, we're good to go. We don't need to necessarily have this work session.
We did, we did that one agreement.
Well.
Four that have not contracted yet, what do they need to do?
Yeah, I've gotta go. All of the code requires is that there is some agreement, provide police protection.
What do you and the board, what are you gonna require? If, if Rosehill says, we'll pay the forty-two dollars an hour, and we want one extra hour of patrol per year. Is that something you're gonna approve? One hour, you guys' requirement?
So you're talking forty-two dollars a week?
No, forty-two dollars per hour. They want one hour of extra patrol.
So forty-two dollars for the year.
For the fiscal year, to get them through to the next budget period where they can hash out how many realistic hours of extra patrol they want. Because if I'm understanding, would that fulfill the requirements?
That'd be fine, yeah. I mean, there's no requirement that it's how many hours or anything like that. It just has to be some agreement. So I mean, if the board is willing to approve that, that's how it's gonna go.
You guys have established that you want.
Is the board gonna agree with what?
The, the board has established they want forty-two dollars an hour for, above and beyond our normal answering calls. If the four cities, to get them to the next budget, so they don't have to amend their budgets, to get them until next December when they start working on their budget. Will you sign a 2080 agreement for one extra hour per city for forty-two dollars going into the general fund?
Next deal, you say you would. Yes, you're not gonna add patrol? I mean, if you're gonna, if they're gonna limit their patrol.
If I understood that correctly, would that work on all three of you?
I could go with that for first year.
And what I would say, I mean, that's, that's totally fine. I would say in the, in the draft agreement, though, it should probably say that the sheriff is willing to respond to calls for service. And I know you already are doing that.
Yeah.
But just so it reflects that you're, yeah, you are providing that police protection. Regardless, you know, and you always, obviously have the autonomy to do whatever you want, but just so it's formalized. And then obviously the hour on top of that, you know, just has a kind of token amount.
That gets the four that don't have a contract, I mean, they're not gonna have to amend their budgets for forty-two dollars. I'm assuming you got an extra forty-two somewhere. That gives them, and then this fall, they can start, when they're working on their budget, they can start hashing out what they wanna do for a realistic contact. And if they choose to keep it at one hour a year for forty-two dollars?
But if they all cut their hours of patrol, it won't cut your man-hours any.
We don't have extra patrol hours for them already.
No, but they're talking about cutting their patrol hours.
No, there's four or five.
They don't have contracts.
I think they're getting patrol now.
Right, the ones without contract. But Beacon was talking about cutting their patrol hours, right? We gotta even out our, to adjust what we're already paying, because of what we got budgeted for. Right. That's what we gotta do. We can't, we ain't got nobody to put in here for that, you know? But what we got budgeted for now, we're gonna adjust our patrol hours to that budget. So that saves you man-hours.
Right, then I can control you guys' time, the incorporated more.
Huh? I'm not saying we're doing that, Steve, but that's, that's.
If, if we could, if we could, I'll come back. Let's, just stay on topic with Lori. Rosehill, Barn City, Kioma Village, and Lighten. If you guys agree to a 2080 agreement stating you want one extra hour of patrol in addition to us answering your calls, you agree to pay the general fund forty-two dollars for that one hour over the next year. Then this fall, or this winter, when you guys are working on your budgets, and you choose as a council to increase your hours at forty-two dollars an hour, that's your business. Does that satisfy the board and Andrew from the code requirements? If I understood, it does.
Well, yes, so again, as long as there's an agreement of any kind, that works for the code. I guess I, I would, I guess I would just clarify. So I think for providing police protection, the agreement would need to talk about calls for service. Again, which I understand you'll do independently, which you also can do, but.
Right, yep, we can throw that in there.
If, let's say, come November, we have this discussion again, and let's say a community says, we want zero hours of patrol, but we still want calls for service reflected in a 2080, just so they have that police protection to satisfy the code. At, at that point, again, the board would have to decide whether they are willing to make that agreement for the responsibility for the answering calls for service with zero dollars or one hour a year, that sort of thing. Again, I guess practically speaking, you can always provide it regardless of what every contract says. But legally speaking, there should have to be some agreement of some kind, is my view.
So would have you satisfied?
We have you satisfied, Steve?
Yes.
Would the three members on the supervisor sign off on it?
Steve, yes or no?
On the first year, I will, yes.
First year.
First year only.
Yes, Steve, yes or no?
Could you buy into your budget? Do you have time to fix your budgets? I understand that.
Second, Steve, yes or no?
Yep, I'd agree to that.
Mark, yes or no?
I probably will for the first year.
Okay, done, all three agree.
And that, what that does, that gives them time, they don't have to amend their budgets, and they can start.
Because the way I look at it, if he can cut hours of patrol, it's saving the county money. It's, all comes down to the money. Somebody's gotta pay the one point three million, and that's what it comes down to. It's nothing personal. It's just who pays their sheriff the one point three million.
And for what responsibility?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want anybody paying for my sheriff's duty. I don't want Lighten paying for mine, I don't want anybody else. I'll take care of my own responsibility, that's what it comes down to.
Before it's decided who pays for who, a whole lot more information is needed.
Right, I agree, I agree, Lori. I agree. And, you know, what, what.
If you can get that information, we, we can't even get it. So if you can get it for your city.
I can't get it from 911 all.
I can't get them from Jamie. Andrew, I think, tried last weekend, couldn't get them.
Why?
Because the CAD system is not set up to, to tell which entity's calling.
I'm happy.
You know, if your, if your town wants to hire retired police officers and wants to do it, I think that's fine, ain't it?
This gives us my.
Thanks, Chuck.
I understand.
Then we can move on.
It's just difficult, you asked us questions, and we can't get the information, make an educated, honest decision. It's frustrating sitting here, when the taxpayers are paying nine hundred.
Maybe by November, we can have better information.
The taxpayers are paying nine hundred and some thousand dollars for a 911 service, and we can't even tell who's calling us and have a log of it.
So.
So just, just to clear, because I'm gonna take this with my cap on Tuesday. This, this new year coming up, we rewrite that 2080 agreement to say we want patrol hours, or we come back and we figure out how many patrol hours before that, forty-five hundred dollars. The board would approve that for the four, the four cities that have a contract today, so we don't have to amend our budget, we just have to have 2080. Is that incorrect?
I agree, yes. That's what I think we agreed on, George. It's just, next November, I think we ought to re-have this conversation with some numbers like Lori said.
Anyways, we're talking about in October.
Okay. I agree, October. Okay.
And everybody up there was in agreement with what the.
Correct.
And the county attorney thinks that's wonderful, too.
As long as it's the right.
It's a contract.
Yeah.
It satisfies the code.
Yep.
Yeah. The code comes first.
So at this point, just so I understand the procedure. Obviously, I can't draft an agreement until each of your entities approves or says what they wanna do. What are you? What are you anticipating the next step to be? Uh, do you anticipate? Uh, no, this current, this current agreement about the one hour, you know, or whatever the hours. You obviously can't speak for the entire council, you need to represent.
I can't speak for the entire council, but I can, I, I know my council fairly well, and I'm gonna say that they're probably not gonna wanna amend the budget for more patrol hours. When they know that, that the sheriff's department's wanting to respond to the call. And I explain to them, then the code, then my, what I'm gonna recommend to the council is, is if we rewrite the twenty E agreement, I'm actually gonna have a couple of them ready before the council meeting, because it's Tuesday. And July is when it's due to the board supervisors, so that we satisfy the state code. I'm going to write one that we have no protection for, or no, excuse me, no patrols for this fiscal year, and it remains at the current dollar amount that's set today. With the one we were gonna present to them next month, and the second would be, I'm going to sit down and I'm gonna figure out on forty-two dollars an hour, how many hours of patrol I will get over twelve months out of that forty-two dollars an hour. And I'm gonna present both of those to the board, so that way they have the same options as the council has. Now, if the council says, nope, we wanna amend the budget, then we'll go to another step, but we still have to have one to you by July, so that we satisfy the state code.
You can amend your budget by July.
No, that's what I'm saying, so you'll have one of the other by July.
Yeah.
And then if we want to go above and beyond that, then that's gonna take a budget amendment, which I don't know that we have the money or not. These are already pretty, pretty much allotted for, so if they wanna do that, then we look at places we need to cut, we amend our budget, and then we re-present it to the board supervisors through you.
Yeah, so what I think, I, I, you're from University Park directly, uh, so obviously you have a twenty E, uh, release term. So I think perhaps that the, for those entities, uh, like Barn City, I think, that doesn't have twenty E, what probably would make more sense is for me to draft a twenty E based on what the current language says basically, uh, based on the rates that, you know, you're agreed to. Uh, so that you can present that to your board, uh, for the, the one hour for that amount, for those that don't have any twenty E's to begin with. So that you have something to approve, cause it kinda needs to be, uh, you know, something that the board votes on, basically, see what I'm saying? So, that's what I'll do, uh, you know, again, if the board, okay's the language or whatever, uh, for those who don't have any twenty E's, that you can present. And for those entities who do have twenty E's, obviously, you can rely, you don't have to be turning if you want to, you always get to that, but that's hard as the amounts and coverage, that's what.
If, if you're offering, you'll definitely take it, but it's Tuesday. I have it by Tuesday.
Yeah, today's Thursday.
We don't have to have it until first of July, do we, Mark? They got till the first of July, right?
Even if they sign it in August, what's, what's the, what's the difference?
They only have one day to go out.
Well, I will.
You know, I don't think, I'm, I'm not gonna speak for Andrew, but, you know what, even if it's signed by the end of July, I don't think, I don't think anybody's gonna pursue any action as long as they're moving forward with anything.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, I mean, I'm, again, my only concern is that.
We're nervous about July first, but we're all on the same page, we're moving forward, I think July first is, is, is a date on the calendar. Let's put some realistic into what we're gonna have it done, it could, it could be the first of August before they're all signed. Times everybody gets okayed and the councils and everybody, you know, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
Just don't get so nervous about July one, we're moving forward, we're talking, we're working on things.
Once you make a twenty E agreement, with I blanked so many hours, I so many dollars, blanked so many dollars, and so, and let our first city's go in no hours.
Yeah, there's four here twenty E agreement, Jim, if you read the one you've got, there's a couple of other requirements in the twenty E.
Yeah, but I, I think his point, it's the effect of there'd be one standard agreement, template, and all you change out is, you know, Barn City or, you know, Lighten or whatever. That would be something I'm willing to, to act, to do, and you can, you know, fill in what you want, and then present it to the board for their ultimate approval of what our hours or whatever it is. And if I base it on the language that we already have, there shouldn't be that much of a revision. So I, I mean, I can work on that between now and tomorrow, uh, the problem is the, is distributing this to people by tomorrow. So I'll need either the clerks or contact information for every city council to email it to them so you can look at it. Okay, yeah, I think I already have.
Mark's on it, yeah.
So before you guys leave, I would just say, just give me your email addresses so I can get it to somebody tomorrow. Oh, and then I guess I also would say, make sure you also contact your own city attorneys to review any of these documents, cause again, I don't represent any city. So, you should always rely on your own council for any, you know, new twenty E or anything like that.
Really, the language for us is.
Yeah, you, yeah, 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 exactly, you would just change the dollar amount or change the hours.
Yeah, the dollar amount.
Yeah.
Who really wanna head her email?
Yeah, well, I'm.
Anybody have any more questions or anything?
Go ahead, Barb.
You folks already come up and drive through our town, anytime there's a problem, you're there on a call, so will that stop?
No. No.
I know the call won't if they're driving through.
No. My guys have all been instructed, when going from one call to another, if you're relatively close to a city, or a community, or a town, go through, be seen there. Uh, it'd be no different than if down on River Road, we have, we have a, what's this, it's an actual case back in sixteen, we had a rash of burglaries on River Road. My guys were told, anytime you're in that portion of the, of the county, I want you bearing out of your way and being seen on River Road, because just the presence can eliminate some stuff. No, you're gonna see us up in Barn City just as much as you do now.
And with the twenty E agreement, when we do the new, the new year, right?
The additional hours, you're gonna see us sitting and watching a, a stop sign that you're having problem with. You're gonna see us, if you have a particular street where people are speeding more than any other bar, we're running radar, or we're, we're, and we need to bring, um, an unmarked up. It's above and beyond call, answering, it's above and beyond answering.
What city park?
The, the parts of service. This, these contacts are involving above and beyond the, the average or the, the regular answering call.
You know, for example, Barb, if the Long Branch starts partying more and more all the time, and you feel it's a problem, and you need Russ there more, then that's what we call patrol time. Because you're asking for his service to protect your town. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
As long as you never need his service any more than a, an occasional call, it doesn't matter to us, cause we don't have to add more deals. But if all of a sudden Barn City wants him a hundred hours a week, we gotta add a deputy or two.
We'd take him.
But you know what I'm saying, so our cost goes up, and we're just trying to cover the whole county's cost, and everybody's responsibility is everybody's responsibility, so to speak.
The legislature did not put fair in our eyes, this is, this is some kinda hand down from the legislature, not us.
Right, I know that, I got the email from Bill, trust me, I was really worried about this because of the cost.
Right.
Cause we don't call them every day, uh, at least not that I know of, we don't have a lot of nine-one-one calls.
Yeah.
But we're willing to pay to have them take care of our town.
Right. And it's.
You can contact, I'd, I'd.
But we can't go broke doing.
I'd contact, I'd contact Power Street County and see what they have to say, they might give you a better offer.
See, and what.
You don't know.
What we have.
Okay, you know what I'm saying though, business is business.
Russ is there today, but the conservation board give their employees all eight percent across the board raises, that's all on your taxes. Nobody's complaining about the conservation people getting eight percent raises. Really? They're controlled by a board, they're, we don't control them, we do their budget, but we don't control what the board says, so. Good idea, Barb.
Well, that goes with everything though, it's just like, police protection, when, when the, when the sheriff's responsibilities go up, it costs you more, I mean, it's just, it's parallel.
Just the raises the county give this year was four hundred and thirty thousand, and that don't count Ipers, that's how much more we had to charge the taxpayers. Just for the raises the county workers got this year was four hundred and thirty thousand.
Have any over?
Yeah, we do right now, we have a posting for our economic director.
For what?
Economic Development Director.
If a road grader operator opens up, I'll call you, Barb.
You know what, I wouldn't mind that.
I know. But, you know, it's a bigger picture than a lot of people understand.
And I understand that, you gotta look at the communities too, and what they can bring in, and what they're not doing out.
Well, whatever Russ needs to operate, we want to share, so somebody's gonna pay it, so where do you get the money to pay all this stuff?
And see, now, and now what's fair to all the other communities on top of it?
You know, it's just like we all pay fire protection, even though our house don't burn down, we pay it, you're, you pay it, or you got your own fire department, but, uh, you know what I mean, yeah.
But the state, but the state sets the limit on what you can charge, you, you got, you got twenty E with townships, you know the state sets that, the max. Carl Solomon just told me, dealing with this, fair's not in our eyes, the legislature has determined what fair is, it's not up to us.
We agreed to that. We'll talk next October.
Yeah, I might trade it all, I might be able to, I'll, I'll.
I just don't like that, you people think, well, you three just causing the problem, we really are just trying to, uh, do what we got elected to do. It's just a short timeframe got us in trouble.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, I had no clue, and when I got the letter from the lawyer, that's when I got the clue.
And I didn't know, I didn't have a clue till Andrew said something.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Little town, thanks, thanks, Lori.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Have a good evening.
Listen, see you, Barb, I've talked to you a few times on the phone over the past time.
See you, Jordan, Jim.
I have pneumonia.
Russ?
I'm sorry.